What's it called, the information about the scholarship committee? Okay, it's no decision of all to be taken. It's basically like for them to look at the calendar of when the deadline start for the scholarship committee. And the question, so it's a very brief five minute presentation because we already have the committee. We have everything done like in the previous month, so. Okay, so that's anything I'm going to request to be added so that we could emphasize more the announcement because tomorrow is accessible on all of our in our platform for people to apply. All right, so. Let me see, okay, so Jared is here, all right. Yeah, no, Luke was here, I was talking to him. So I would like to call this meeting to order as seven oh two. And we have the pledge allegiance, so let me do the call of order. Luke Cheswick.
Here.
Jimmy Tarlo.
Yeah.
Jared Stoffes.
Here.
And myself as mayor here, so that we have a full quorum. Thank you so much. All right, so Vice Mayor, can you lead the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much, Jimmy. Next item on the agenda is review of the agenda. Jimmy, can you go ahead and give a read through? And Jared, I'm not sure if you heard me, I'm going to be adding one item to the agenda. That's just mainly like an announcement, an announcement more than anything. Okay? Go ahead, Jimmy.
Call to order to review the agenda, three man council announcements, four public comment, five to kids to park day proclamation, six presentation of March fifteen. Local minutes, all business, opera discussion vote. Eight, did I miss seven? We skipped one. Seven, okay, go back, okay. Eight discussion fiscal year twenty twenty three budget and introduction and first reading of ordinance. New business ordinance number two two oh two two. Open burning prohibited to permit outdoor burning of similar combustible materials under certain conditions. Chapter ten piece in order to repeal section ten dash one point five in its entirety. Number ten ordinance number three dash two oh two two. Amending chapter two assessments of taxation to grant a property tax credit for certain senior citizens and retired veterans. Eleven voter minutes, twelve, well, there's a twelve, mayor, do you want to repeat it? Scholarship, it's called scholarship.
Yeah, Melissa, what do we end up calling it?
I will put it on number seven, let me put that in.
This is a small, it's more like a little present. It has three little slices on it, but it's just like to emphasize the fact that we have a scholarship and it's available starting tomorrow for people to download it and start submitting the application. That's mainly, but it's a little bit more than that. That's why I didn't want to make it just for the announcement.
I was, I was thirteen as a German.
Perfect, thank you so much. So you have heard a read through of the agenda with the addition of the Mount Rainier Scholarship presentation added to it as number seven. Is there anything else that we need to add, discuss? Or can I have a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so we're moving to approve the agenda with the addition. It's been properly moved and seconded, any objections? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the agenda has been approved. Okay, we're moving on to item number three. Mayor and council members event announcements. Okay, council, we're going to go with war one, Jimmy, Luke, followed by Jared. Go ahead, Jimmy, the floor is yours.
The only announcement I wanted to make was that we were lucky or to get a half a million dollar grant out of the state budget for Green Street and flooding improvements. And we have to thank Delegate Julian Ivy for getting this put in the state budget. That's all, thank you.
And the cert committee?
I, the cert committee is having its next meeting on Monday, April fourth, Monday, whatever that is. We've established and we'll send out an announcement for it. We have some new people involved in it who are doing training and it's kind of exciting. We meet at the police station, seven thirty PM on Monday, April twenty fifth.
Thank you so much and thank you for your efforts as well as Nikki and Jack to rebuild the cert committee, Jimmy. All right, Luke, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. We will probably be having an event April twenty third. It could be the twenty fourth, but we're thinking April twenty third at the food forest. We may do some education that day in the food forest about sort of the food for us. We may do something with foraging for mushrooms. And we also may distribute our native plant network signs. Well, we'll, once we finalize the date, we'll get something out to the community. But we're looking at April twenty third right now for that. So if you're waiting on your native plant network sign, we will be distributing them on the twenty third, but we'll be also sending an email to everyone who's owed one so they can come pick it up, or if they can't make it on the twenty third, we can drop it off at their house. Also on later in April, on the twenty eighth at eight PM, the Sierra Club is meeting again. The subchapter on building a native plant and wildlife corridor across the state of Maryland. So we meet the fourth Thursday of every month, so we'll meet on Thursday, April twenty eighth. If anyone would like to join us, just shoot us an email. And I think that's all, thank you.
Thank you so much, Luke. And they could find the information for the days for the Sierra Club on the website already. Have you submitted those days, Luke?
I have not, but I can do that.
Yeah, please, because I think it's a great program that you guys are working on and also because it's going to be expanding, so that way if anybody else is interested. I'm still working on my one percent of yard getting native. Slowly but surely, right? I still have nine to go. All right. Very slowly, thank you, Luke. Jared, go ahead.
Just a reminder to all residents, award two, that we have a special election to fill the empty seat. Vacated by Councilmember Scott Cecil last year. So just a reminder to everyone, Monday, April twenty fifth is the election day. Like previously, you can vote at the Mount Rainier Nature Center from seven AM to eight PM, after which there'll be an unofficial special election results presented. And then a reminder that your, the last day your ballot can be received if you mailed it is Tuesday, April twenty sixth at five PM. So the ballot must be postmarked by the close of polls on election day. And in addition, the, there will be a virtual meeting greet with candidates at forum on April thirteenth at seven PM. Information on that and the link to that is available on the city's webpage. So if you live in War Two, you know, we're really, really excited to have the opportunity to have an election, to fill this seat. We have two candidates running, Valerie Woodall and Tony George. And I hope you're, no matter your interest in War Two, please come out and participate and vote and get involved in the city's democratic process and in selecting the next representative for War Two. Thanks a bunch, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jared. And the forum is being put together by the Mount Rainier Business Association. Thank you MRBA for making sure that every election, we have the forum going. We all have sat through the forum at one point or another. So now that you covered the election, thank you, Jared, for that. Is this Saturday, April nine at eleven AM at the nature center. Come on over, we are gonna, we have plenty of stuffed eggs and bags, Monchito, the bilingo cloud. And as well as the bunny are gonna be there, so you could take pictures with them as well. We have, we're gonna have a couple of information table, also available COVID nineteen tests for you to pick up and take home as well. So it should be a fun day and we have all been working really hard, making sure that is all the candy is ready to go. Mount Rainier Day will be May fourteen. Come out and celebrate Mount Rainier Day, the parade route is going to be shared after Saturday. For, so next week, we're going to be sharing the parade route, so that we could come out and cheer on the various. The various people are going to be marching, it's looking very good. The whole, the whole team has been working really hard on this. The committee yard sale is going to be June third. More information with the red committee, June teen flag raising ceremony will be June seventeen. Pride parade will be June twenty fifth. So this is a couple of the information and for more events, we have like over a year worth of information. Go to mountrainiermb.org and check on our calendar and you'll be able to find the various information there for our events. And if you want to volunteer for any of them, we always take volunteers and we're very happy to have us join. All right, so.
Mayor, I forgot one more announcement.
I knew it. It's only an hour, Jared, go ahead.
And I'll be, I'll be quick and I'll send some more information about this later. The Chesapeake Bay Trust, which ministers Prince George's County's rain check rebate program is doing a, is going to do a webinar and they have not sent it out yet, but they're going to talk about opportunities and case studies of all the different rain check practices. So that's, you know, removing permeable pavement, putting in in garden, funding a rain bear. Installing permeable pavement. I am missing two off the top of my head and I should know them, I'm so sorry. That's going to be Thursday, April fourteenth from six PM to seven thirty and they're going to go through different practices and different case studies. And I'm actually, I use the rain check program to install a permeable patio in my backyard, which got rid of a lot of the standing water issues I've had. So I'll actually be presenting on that as well, but encourage everyone to check out that. It's been a great program, a number of our residents have used to help address water, water, water issues and also to improve, improve the environment and address some of the pollution and stormwater overflows that have been cascading into our waterways. So I'll, I'll provide some more information about that and for the city to send out when folks, when they, when Chesapeake Bay Trust scheduled it, thank you.
Hold on. So the other thing is Jared, can you also announce for the next meeting for the zoning? Daniel Sam, who's going to be coming and presenting?
Yes, yeah.
Jared, we're getting weird feedback, we can't hear you.
From Jared or from whom?
I don't think that's coming from me.
It's not, well, I'm not hearing feedback from Jared. Okay, well, so the new. Hold on.
Oh, you want to? You can, Mayor.
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, so neighborhood conservation overlay zone, it's kind of, it's a new, it's a new zoning overlay that's going to go into effect and it's a, this will be, it's a basically a preservation zone that helps kind of, you know, we don't have a formal historic district designation, like say if you're in DC. You know, there are tax credits like the Maryland Historic Trust Tax Credit that you can, you can use. But the, the, and the neighborhood conservation overlay zone, which is something that Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning has worked with over, I think probably a lot of the last decade, someone has to remind me of the exact timeline in coordination with folks in the community, which will kind of put another layer of protection and standards for preserving our historic fabric and the things that make our community really unique. So there was MNCPPC will come and present on the new changes this two, this coming Tuesday, April nineteenth at our work session at seven PM. So we'll have more information about that as well, but I hope folks that are interested in that, learning more about that, a new overlay and the changes and what that means for this community. In a very, it's all in a very positive way. Encourage you to come out on next Tuesday, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. The other thing to point out, the city of Mount Rainier did send a letter and about ninety percent of the recommendation that the sign review board and you know, our former customer Brian Neller as well worked on, were actually accepted as part of this proposal, so the city has been working really hard on this project for many years. Okay, so thank you for that. And Jared, I know I asked you to inform, I didn't give you the heads up, but I want to make sure that enough people are tuning in because it definitely, we need to be able to know what this information is. So they, they've been foretold that this is happening. Last announcement for me, I participated in the Maryland Municipal Mayor's, the Maryland Mayor's Association Conference last week and it was very positive, it was in Annapolis, we got to lobby. And we are very happy to see some of the returns that are happening. We also got to meet with Governor Hogan and with our forty seven delegation, former mayor Melinda Miles as, as the former mayor was also there. So you had a lot of good representation from Mount Rainier as well as we participated in the women's mayor's, the first woman mayor's salute that took place in Glen Arden. I'm happy to say as a mayor, I was awarded a thousand dollar that I Q bestowed upon a Mount Rainier student in behalf of state attorney Aisha Brayboy. So I'm going to be putting some information out to have people to apply for this and the award money will be given from Camp C and in the state attorney's office. So we're very happy to say that. And tomorrow, I'm gearing to be part of the readers for if I were a mayor contest for a Maryland Municipal League, I'll be reading for more than seven hours essays for fourth graders around the state. So we're very eager for to see that happening. And I got to go speak also to the fourth graders, the elementary schools. And it's always great to hear them because you leave a very happy to see how much work and what they think and the things that they see. So it gives you positive energy to continue doing this job that a lot of times is, a lot of time and very stressful. So we're looking forward to doing that and we're looking forward to next year going back to bringing the third graders to, to come meet the whole entire staff because I think it's important for them to also meet the people that do this great work for the city and meet the rest of the, you know, council at city hall in our own setting, because I know quite a few of them. They, they're in bed by the time we finish this meeting, so they never get to see city hall except for that third grade visit that they have to get in very enthusiastic about potentially running for office one day, but at least getting closer to working with us and know that they're being heard as well. All right, I will leave those announcements there, more announcements, you can find in my Facebook, there's a whole list of stuff that we've been doing this week. All right, thank you guys so much. I were gonna move forward to item number four, public comment. If there's a member of the committee that would like to speak, please state your first and last name, your block and street number, and you have three minutes to speak. Please pick an item that's not necessarily on the agenda unless you cannot make it. You know, unless you have to leave early and you cannot address that item. So team communications, let me know if there's anybody on Facebook or on or what is, or on Zoom that would like to speak. I don't see nothing in the chat, so just type your name and last name on the chat, so that way I know you'd like me to call upon you. Okay, I'm not seeing. Let me see. Okay, so I see John, you have John from thirty, thirty two hundred Shepherd Street. You have three minutes to speak, go ahead.
Are, are you folks hearing something? I'm not.
No, we're not hearing.
I'm not hearing anything. John, if you're speaking, we cannot hear you.
Sorry about that. So my name is John Patsy, I live at thirty two oh nine Shepherd Street. Thank you, council members. I'm just speaking up to let you know that I've collected over fifty signatures on a petition asking for a no dig option. Asking the city to pursue a no dig project for Spring Park. So upwards of fifty people in the neighborhood have already signed the petition asking the city to pursue a no dig option. So that is just to keep you up to date on that, thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Jared, is anybody on Facebook? No one, okay. All right, Hillary, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and council members. John raised the question of Spring Park, I just wanted to check in and see if there were any updates on that. I know at the last council meeting, there were some follow on items where the city was going to look into a few additional things and engage with the county and I would, I would appreciate an update if you have one, thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Write your name in the chat, if not, we will close the public announcement.
And Mayor, if you'd like, I can give an update on Spring Park while we're waiting.
Luke, if you're gonna give an update that's on the agenda, I'd rather us to move it for the next agenda meeting. If it's something briefly as that we're going to meet for next meeting, that'll make more sense, I just don't want to.
Yeah, I can, I was just gonna, I was.
To be answering questions, remember it's supposed to be before announcements, go on.
I was just going to briefly say, the tree commission issue gave us its recommendation yesterday, so that's why there's nothing on the agenda. So to Selena's point, it'll be on the work session agenda. The tree commission agreed with the, the arborist's recommendation, so we need to discuss what the arborist sent us, what the tree commission sent us on the work session and a lot of those outstanding questions about the county and stuff, all that we're going to discuss for the work session because we didn't get the tree commission's recommendation until yesterday and that wasn't enough time to put it on the agenda to put the public on notice. So we're going to visit it at the work session at the end of the month, thank you.
Thank you, Luke, and let me see. Thank you for that. And our next meeting is the third Tuesday of the month as scheduled, okay? All right. Thank you. Okay, all right, I'm going to make the last call. If there's nothing, we're going to move to the next item, okay? All right, perfect. Thank you guys so much for, for being here and we hope to see you guys on the next meeting. And what, what was the day, Jared?
April nineteen, Tuesday, April nineteenth.
Tuesday, April the nineteenth, after the kids' spring break. All right, thank you, I know, we're going to see how many of the parents are put together after the, the week of spring break. Okay, perfect, thank you guys so much. Oh, moving on to item number five, kids to park day proclamation. Can you put it on the screen, please, Melissa? All right, let me. My vision is like completely out right now, okay? I think I am turning into Melinda, I told her that last week when I saw her. I was like, I thought it was bad and I was getting worse by the second, how bad I can see. Okay, proclamation, proclaiming May twenty first, twenty twenty one as the Kids to Park Day in the city of Mount Rainier. Whereas May twenty first, twenty twenty is the twelve Kids to Parks Day organized in lounge by the National Park Trust, held annually on the Thursday, Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks publicly. And whereas kids to park day empowers kids and encourage families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands and waters. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity. Diabetes, hypertension and hypercholesteremia. And whereas kids to park day will broaden, uh, children's appreciation for nature and outdoors and whereas kids to. You're moving, Melissa. Kids to park day will recognize the importance of creating responsibility while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And now therefore let it be resolved. Let me see what word. I, Selena Benit, I, Mayor Selena Benitez do proclaim hereby proclaim May twenty first, twenty twenty. Uh, kids to park stay. And, uh, this one doesn't have my signature, but I'll be a signed copy of it. So. Please put your mics off. Thank you. Okay, so you guys have the resolution in front of you. You just don't need to vote on it, but I just want to make you guys aware. That there's a proclamation and we have signed up to the, um, put it enough in the top, uh, Melissa, move it up. We have signed up on the national park and trust website. So that way they're aware we're also, uh, sending this proclamation. Once it's signed, we're gonna be directing it to them. Okay? And we'll put information out, um, to encourage youth to, uh, do other activities. And we're trying to work to see if we could do something that they as well. All right. So, any questions, council? I'll take that as a no. All right. Thank you, guys. All right. So item number six, presentation of May, uh, March fifteenth, twenty twenty special legislative meeting. And work session, uh, minutes. Melissa, this item is yours.
Melissa? Hey, mayor, council.
Good evening.
The minutes first, the special legislative meeting and work session of March fifteenth, twenty twenty two. It was part of mayor council package for you to review and just let me know if you have any changes or addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. So council, this is just a presentation and those minutes will be ready to vote on our May, um, May meeting. Correct, Melissa?
Yes.
All right. So if you have any changes, please submit them to Melissa, Melissa, the sooner the better. Um, if not, at least a week prior. So that way she could make the adjustments and have them ready for the, for the legislative meeting in May. And once again, Melissa, thank you for being so on point with our minutes. Um, you're, you're very on point with them and we really appreciate that. Okay? All right. Uh, moving on to item number seven, um, the youth scholarship, um, this was this youth scholarship program. So as you guys are aware, since twenty eighteen, we have had the youth, um, the youth scholarship award. In which we award seven students in the city of Monreynia, uh, funding for them to be able to support them to help with education. Every year we select, um, every year we select a scholarship committee. That is appointed by mayor council, uh, in order to make this election for us. Last year, um. A few months back, as council, we decided to vote on re-electing the board that we had. And this board will be accepting the applications and interviewing the youth. And giving their recommendations to mayor and council and we'll get to meet who the youth are. So move it up as much as you can, Melissa, so you could show, see the calendar. So this week, the information is gonna be sent it out to the schools and posted all over our social media. Please, if you have newsletters, council members, send them out as well. So that way we get to, um. Spread this information this year, instead of giving seven scholarships for a thousand dollars each. We're gonna give seven scholarships for three thousand dollars each. As council, we voted to, um, authorize friends from ARPA to be able to maximize, um. The award, uh, for the scholarship committee. So this is like, that's, um, this is the most we have given to one person, um. At a time. Friday, the twentieth, it is the deadline by five P M. They have to turn it into city hall to Melissa. They could do it electronically or turn in the package to her, but it has to be turned in before five P M. To be considered. May twenty third to June first, our scholarship committee will be meeting. And they will be, um, reviewing the packages and scheduling along with our city clerk that interviews. Say essay to five hundred word essay. And, um, they will submit the, uh, the information through us. June third, uh, the finalist parents and guardians will be notified. And then June seven, that is a very special day when mayor and council will receive, um, the nominations for the winners. So that way we could meet them and their families and we could, um, award them the funds. Okay? Uh, pull it up all the way to the keep going, keep going. So the application is basically the same. Every year we change the, the question. Um, two point five GPA and a higher must be entry enrolled a second plus secondary technical vocation institution of high learning. Uh, the application must be completed or required be met and must be arrested in of the city of Monreynia for at least one year. Okay, Melissa, all the way through. So the questions for this year are, go down, 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 down. There you go. You went too fast. You, oh. Oh, thank you, Melissa. You, you made it a bigger fun. I appreciate it. Okay. Uh, these are the five hundred word essay questions. They have to select one of them. The city was awarded five point four million in American Rescue Plan Act. ARPA funds. If you were mayor or council member, how will you utilize this funds to empower the youth in our community? Question number two, how can youth utilize social media as a tool to make an impact in your, in your community and promote the city to draw more visitors? And number three, what slogan would you create for the city of Monreynia to promote the traits and cultures of the city? Explain why. So those are the three, uh, questions that could select any of them and they get to write five hundred, uh, words. Um, minimum on this project. So council, do you guys have, um, you guys have any questions? Any comments? So, um, Jimmy? Jimmy Tarler, are you there?
What's, what's your question?
Do you have any questions or comments about the application?
I'll let you know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Luke?
Uh, no, no, no questions, but just, uh, this is just want to reiterate for the community, hopefully who's paying attention here. Um, you know, this is a wonderful, wonderful program, the best time. This is a couple of times that are really, um, you get a lot of joy. Um, uh, obviously when you pass a budget, that's joyful. But when you, when you get to give these kids a, um, a scholarship, it, it, there's a lot of joy in their faces. And the fact that we're gonna be able to use ARPA funds to do, um, uh, 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 just a really significant. Um, amount of money for these kids. Um, it's just so, so cool. Um, and, um, kudos to Selena for starting this program when she was on council. Um, and keeping it running and really making sure we have people who can review these, um, applications. Uh, in, in for residents, the people who volunteer, they get a lot of joy out of this too. They get to read. About all the neat things some kids in our town are doing. And a lot of times we don't see these high schoolers around. Um, they live at different hours than your parent, I think, of a young kid. So, um, or, or just living a different life than a high schooler. So, um, uh, it's, it's, if you ever want to be on the committee to help review these applications, that you get a lot of joy out of that. Um, and this is just really cool. We're gonna be able to really, I think, impact somebody's life in a big way. Um, through this ARPA funding and I just think it's really cool. And thank you, mayor, for all your, all your work on it.
Thank you so, so much, Luke. Um, and also, um, it's definitely a, a goodness. Um, it's very rewarding to see the families and the youth and we get to hear their stories. But also like what has this money been able to utilize? Someone have been able to graduate on time because they've been able to take a summer class. Uh, quite a few of them have made like the honor list because they, they managed to be able to focus just on this. Been able to buy their books, right? And especially right now through COVID. Someone had to decide whether, because their families were struggling financially, what decisions they will make with education. So this definitely is gonna make sure that they know once again that we are investing in them. And want to make sure that that decision is not for them to drop from school, but. You know, that we're willing to help a little more in order to make sure they stay. So this is definitely go a long way. Uh, Jared?
No, I, uh, I don't know if I could add anything that, uh, everyone hasn't already, uh, Luke and, um, Selena. So just, you know, thanks, thanks to everyone for their engagement, their participation. Um, and, uh, both on the viewer side and, um, the student side. So I'm there for, um, getting this started and, uh, keeping it going.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Jared. Uh, we do have a question on the chat and Ja- uh, Jared, eh, can you please make sure, uh, to check Facebook if anybody has the question? So Shivali, first and last name, uh, block number, street. Go ahead.
Hi, this is, uh, Shivali Shop, um, forty two hundred block, thirty first street. Uh, this is great. I love these questions. I like that there's a choice. And one of the things that's really cool about the scholarship is that it's one of the many things that the city does that gets. Young people thinking about the city as their home, not just the, you know, the house that they grew up in or the school they went to. And so thank you so much for having this. My question is, um. It's really exciting that this year we were able to offer higher amounts in the scholarships. But because these ARPA funds are not an annual thing, then does that mean the, we'll have to go back to a thousand later? Or is there a plan to keep sort of slowly increasing them over time? Um, I'm asking specifically with respect to this particular, you know, scholarship, because we're talking about that now. But I've also just generally been wondering that, you know, all the, when you put aside like the specific projects that the city is working on that begin and end. For some of these recurring things that, uh, the city is adding money for, you know, what, what happens to them when the ARPA money is not there later? Um, but for this scholarship question, I was just wondering if the trajectory was to kind of keep adding a little bit more every year? Or will we feel like we need to go back to a thousand once the, the ARPA funding? Um, is over. Thank you.
So a co-answer for, for me. Um, so at least for the next three to three years, right? It's gonna be three thousand and I'm definitely gonna advocate for the budget to keep him at three thousand. Uh, because, um, we have seen how beneficial the thousand has been and definitely like a little more what I've been able to help like them to go further along, right? So the idea is at least in my end to like, you know, request for us to, um. To fund it through ARPA as long as we can. And then after, um. Keep it at three thousand for each of the students. So, um, this should be able to help us out as ARPA is able to fulfill this obligation. It will also will allow us to, uh, put some money on the coffer, um, that is not being utilized for, for this. But I think especially with the youth, um, it's important to do that. The other thing is like, I'm working on the resolution to have a youth council. So that's gonna be one of the things that, um, they are definitely gonna be tasked to make sure they advocate, um, for funds. Um, especially for the, for the scholarships, but at the same time, um, for any program that they've, they, they think that we should be, um. We should be putting together in order to have more involvement, uh, from the youth. So this is like one step and yeah, a hundred percent. Um, I, I will say to you that this is when we see a lot of the students that we see like, you know, we see them little. And they still know they're in high school and graduating and you definitely realize, um, how much this means to the parents and to them. So yeah, so the idea is to like, once our prize done, like, you know, to, um, advocate for three thousand, seven, seven scholarships for two thousand dollars from their own. Okay? All right, um, console, I don't know if you have anything else to add, but that's where I'm at. Okay? Uh, so, uh, no Facebook comments at this point. All right. So. Council, thank you so much for entertaining adding this to the agenda. Um, I felt like it needed more than just, um. A quick run through, at least we could, uh, visualize and say like, you know, the calendar was presented. It'll be all over our social media. So I ask once again. Please share within your networks, um, to make sure we're reaching as, as many, uh, parents and students as we can. So that way they, they know this program is there and, and we want to help. Okay? Um, item number eight, ARPA discussion and vote, uh, we usually put that in case we decide to vote on something. Okay? So mayor and council will have discussion will include the recipients of the small business grant program. Uh, Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, mayor and council. So tonight, uh, as we know that the city has been using our perform to. Help the small business, uh, that has been impacted by COVID nineteen. And the businesses that have been open before March nine, twenty twenty. So we have gone. We have received more than twenty applications so far. So, and for tonight, I got another. So far, we have processed nine businesses that are qualified and have received the. Fund from the city. So tonight I have four more businesses that I believe they are invited to the meeting. And, um, so I would like mayor and council to recognize them and then we will have another. Invitation for them to come to the city hall and the check will be presented to them by mayor and council. So do you want me to read the names?
Go, go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
Okay. Tonight, I believe that we should have the Brew Tainer LLC. American Custom Print LLC. And these are the name of businesses that are receiving the small business assistance. Caller by Tangi LLC, LLC. And the last one is L, L Plenque, I hope that I'm pronouncing it right. Many grocery store LLC. These are the four people that have been invited tonight. In order to complete our nine qualified businesses so far. So we have more applications to review right now. And, uh, hopefully mayor and council will allocate some more money if we have. Few numbers that could be qualified, but, uh, everybody has applied before March eighteen. And, uh, the first round was only fifty thousand dollars. So we have spent with this four new businesses tonight. Right now we are, we are at forty five thousand dollars. So we got, uh, five thousand dollars more. But I will provide the information later to mayor and council and see what their direction will be.
So, Mr. Kamali, can you give the, the first round of the names so that we can know and then we'll add this on, sir, please?
I'm sorry. First, I have one, I don't have it with me. Uh, sorry. So I thought that we're only announcing these people that are invited tonight.
Okay. So we will have a complete list in the website. Okay? Uh, with everything, so just as our, uh, for the, for our residents, um. The small business grant, it was awarding up to five thousand dollars to, uh, small businesses in the city of Monreynia. That qualified, um, under the, the various, um, ARPA requirements, um. That included also that they did not get any, uh, funding from the county. Um, and also from the city in previous, um, rounds, um. Whether it was the million dollar sets of fun or other, um, other grants to make sure that we started helping, um. Uh, some of the smaller businesses that needed the, the extra help. Okay? So that's the reason why we did it. That way to make sure we went at a first, you know, the first round. Um, because we have, uh, quite a few businesses to help the, the little ones first. Okay? All right. So that's, um, thank you so much.
Please, I just want to add something before you ask the council to, to move forward. So I think all this information is posted, if I'm not mistaken, on the city's website. I think, uh, all the information regarding the small business assistance and the recipient of that fund. Should be, should be, uh, you know, up to date and I will definitely check it and make sure that. But I'm sorry that, uh, I didn't bring the old list for you to.
Yeah, you're fine, Mr. Kamali. All right.
Good evening. This is Lars, this is Lars Mark with Blue Tigers. Wanted to chime in and thank the city of Monreynia, everybody to play the part. And this is all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Just give me a minute. Let me talk to council and then I'll give you guys the floor. Okay? But we appreciate you being here, uh, as well. Council, do you have, uh, anything to add? I'm gonna go Jared, Jimmy, Luke? Council?
Oh, sorry, sorry about that. Nope, uh, nothing to add. And just, um, you know, thanks to everyone for, uh, taking the time to participate. Uh, in this program and we're glad to be able to, um, provide the support. Um, you know, with the, with the, uh, American Rescue Plan. You know, with the, with the American Rescue Plan funds provided, find a good avenue for supporting businesses in our, businesses in our city that are really contributing a lot to, to health and the wellbeing of our, thank you.
Thank you so much. Jimmy?
Just second what Jared said. A lot of our small businesses have been really suffering and I go into some of them and during that pandemic, their clientele was down 70, 80%. And, you know, this is not a, this is a little help for them. And I hope we, I will be supporting additional money because some of the businesses met the deadline but didn't come in first. So hopefully we can, you know, give the assistance to all the businesses that applied and were reviewed and were okay for funding. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Kamali and Mr. Himler, who's helped review all the applications.
Thank you so much. Jimmy Luke?
I just, again, thank you, Mr. Kamali, Mr. Himler, for setting this program up and getting it running. Really appreciate that. You know, it's a consensus of the Mayor and Council to support our business community in doing this. And if we can do more money for more businesses, that would be great. I just want to thank you to the businesses who have been awarded this money, both for keeping your business in Mount Rainier, keeping it going, and for applying. I know it's not easy sometimes to, 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 to do the paperwork and get that stuff in. And I appreciate you, you for doing that. And Pete, please pass along the good news that this is available to your, to your fellow business owners, because as Jimmy mentioned, I could see us going back for, for more money here for this program. And I just appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So the owner served Brew Tainer, you were just here, so I'll see you the floor. Go ahead.
No, I just basically just gonna touch on the same thing, just giving, just wanna thank you guys for allowing me to, you know, receive the grant, the city of Mount Rainier, everyone that played a part. I think it's a great thing to help, you know, the business owners that's suffered from COVID and, you know, business slowing down. I think it, it gives us a little bit more push to keep going. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much. American. American Custom Print? Is anybody here from American Custom Print? Okay, Color by Tangi?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Tangi.
Hi, hi Jimmy. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
I would just like to thank everyone and City Council, the Mayor, especially Jimmy for coming and bringing me the application and always keeping me up to date with everything. And I just wanted to say you all, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tangi. El Palenque, Mini Grocery?
Good afternoon, Mayor Selena. I would just like to say thank you for telling me about the money that we really did need. I would just like to thank the city as well for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Thank you very for applying. I know sometimes it feels like you couldn't want to apply because they might not get the funding. I would say if the city has the funding, like, please apply. And I do have the list of the other recipients you have, and it's on the website. Mr. Kamali, thank you so much. I, I asked you to say it, but it is on the website. Thank you guys for listening. Right now the new, the recipients for the other ones were Hair, Hair by New, Forty Wings, Miss Pro African Hair Braiding, Dean Miles Beauty Salon, PJ Payne with Gaywood Media Arts Lab. And then we've added Britannia America Custom, Colors by Tangi and El Palenque to the list. All right, thank you guys so much for being here. And we will be taking and awarding the, the checks right after, okay? Thank you, guys. All right, guys, aside from that, is there anything else that you guys need to discuss on ARPA? This will be like your moment to discuss, Council.
May.
What is it, Jimmy?
I think we also, there was a grant awarded to the, I don't know what Latino that the, the outreach for education that was awarded to, that we might want to announce. That was, Mr. Kamali, do you have the actual name of the grant?
Yeah, the grant was access to.
Jimmy, it's two different things. We can announce it in the next meeting, that's fine, but this is just for the small business grant program.
Well, you asked me if there was anything I wanted to talk about and announce, so.
Okay, I thought you meant for the list, so this is two different things. So, we're to discuss this one. I mean, we could mention that, but I don't think it's, I don't know if an award letter has been given to them yet. Hasn't a word given to them yet, Mr. Kamali?
No, Mayor, for your information, Joe's Movement Emporium are receiving that grant, but we are working on the grant agreement right now with our consultant. And hopefully by April 8th, we're gonna have everything to be delivered. But I will definitely confirm it with Mayor and Council.
Okay, and that was, Jimmy, what it was called, Mr. Kamali? I know it wasn't small business grant, it was called something.
That was, that was the public access to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm going through my list to find it.
Sorry.
It's access to public services for Latino and other community in the city.
All right, thank you, Jimmy. I was just wanna make sure two different things were not confused. Go ahead.
I, I also want to just mention that that was a very competitive process. And Mr. Kamali, Mr. Himler did a whole grading system. And there were three different businesses applied, three different nonprofits applied for it. But Joe's Movement Emporium got the best grades on it and was awarded the project.
All right, thank you. Council, anything else to add on this point?
Mayor, if you'd like to discussion on just the, the business awards, no. But I do have a comment on ARPA in general.
What's your comment? Go ahead. I mean, it's a discussion, so it covers discussion.
Just to piggyback on, you know, the, the award that Jimmy helped get from, from Julian for 31st Street. There, because we have that money that could offset the, the project that we already identified for 31st and Perry, which I think the cost was 609,000. So that would obviously open up more money for ARPA and just flagging that for everyone's attention. That's all. We can visit that at another time. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. We're probably gonna visit it on the 18th because we have to make a lot of decisions that day, right? At least when it comes to like, discussion of funds. So that will be approved, whatever else we need to approve for the May meeting. All right, perfect. Jared, anything to add?
Nope, nothing else.
Thank you, Jared. All right, moving on to item number nine. Is this you, Jared? No. Discussion of FY 2023 Budget and Introduction. A First Reading of Ordinance Number 4-2022. As Ordinance Establishing the Tax Rate, Adopting of Annual Budget, Appropriation Fund for the Fiscal Year 2023, Beginning July 1st, 2022, and Ending June 30, 2023. The Mayor and Council will have a discussion on FY 23 Budget and Introduction, the First Reading of the Ordinance. Do you have the ordinance in front of you, Melissa? Thank you, Melissa. All right, put it up. Okay. All right, so you have in front of you, Ordinance 04-2022. This, in order, we do yearly to establish the tax rate, adopting annual budget appropriation of funding fiscal year, blah, 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 blah. All right, let me see, keep moving it up. As you see, it just basically gives you the whereas, right? The budget provides a complete, oh my goodness, my poor eyes. After giving public notice, the Council held a public hearing on constant yield on that day, after, after considering the Commission Fiscal Year 23, Budgets, submitting the city manager. So this is the first reading. And can somebody else read it? I apologize. That thing's still very small and Myers is still burning from allergies.
I, I can go ahead.
Luke, go ahead and read it.
It's four pages.
First paragraph is whereas in accordance of Section 6603 of the Tax Property Article, by July 15th of each year, the Council of the City of Mount Rainier shall set the tax rate for the next fiscal year. Whereas a public hearing must be held. Whereas the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 23 will exceed the blended constant yield tax rate of 74 cents per $100 of assessed value. Whereas the city manager submitted a recommended budget to Council for review. Whereas the budget provides a complete financial plan for FY 23. Whereas the City of Mount Rainier Charter Section 70B requires the Council to conduct a public hearing, which we have done this Saturday. Whereas after giving public notice, the Council held a public hearing on the constant yield tax rate and to receive comments on the proposed fiscal year 23 budget and tax rates on June 7th, 2020. That date should not be June 7th, 2022.
Yep.
The public hearing was held on April 2nd, 2022. So can we change that, please, for the next reading?
Thank you.
And that should be April 2nd, 2022. And we can, point of order, Mayor, I think probably at the end of this reading, would we, well, we just have to present it. So would we, would we amend it now, at the, after I'm done reading it? Would we amend it or would we, would we just get that ready for the next reading?
It is the first, it's the first reading, Luke. So it's just for us to read through it. If there's some things we need to change, record this. Remember, if it's something like a day we need to add, it's, it's something minor that they just, they could need to fix, right? So it's nothing like big. I mean, this is not approving, there's, we're not approving any taxes or anything today. It's just basically like, read through it.
Right.
Internalize it. If there's any suggestions, like, add it, change it, or whatever needs to be, and then move forward from there on. Go on.
Whereas the consider, scroll back up to that last paragraph. After considering the recommended FY 23 budget and comments were made at the public hearing, the Council adopts the budget and tax rates that's set forth in this ordinance, which we have not done yet. Here, Section 1 sets forth the tax rates. And just for the public to know, we have not voted on these tax rates. So the Mayor and Council during its discussion on Saturday discussed lowering the tax rates for single-family homeowners and townhouse owners. So you may see that change. All the remaining tax rates are there on the screen, including the business personal property tax, the railroad tax. And then general fund revenues were slated to be 11,339,539. That's inclusive of ARPA funding, which is 3.5 million of that. So our, it's not like our city budget just jumped a ton. And then the expenditures category is 10,992,769. Again, 3.5 million of that is ARPA spending. So it's not like we are all of a sudden expending all that money. The department expenditures total, 10.9 million dollars. And keep scrolling down. Again, that's inclusive of ARPA. And then staffing for FY 23, general government will be five, one less FTE. Administrative Services will be five, the same from FY 22. Econ will have one, which is the same. Police Department has been proposed for 23, which is a two-person increase. Code Compliance is four, which is a one FTE increase. Public Works retains 10. FTEs for a total budget increase of two from 46 to 48. Again, for the public's knowledge, we have not voted on this budget yet. So these are just from the city manager's proposed budget, and this is a first reading. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I think especially because we have, because we have not passed a budget together. I, I also need to make sure that we read through it, so that way we can identify. So Council, this is based on the 79, but as Luke mentioned, we all aware that we have asked for a reduction. So next time, those numbers are gonna change. But now you see what the document looks like, what we need to pass. And once everything, you know, once we say like we have done reading of the budget and we agree on everything, we're gonna make sure and change those numbers to make sure it reflects that, okay? Council, do you guys have, Luke, since you're ready, I'm gonna go to Jimmy and then Jared. Jimmy, go ahead.
Just one clarification, and Mr. Kamali, you can correct me. I think the ARPA amount is 2.7 million, but there were other grants that we made up to 3.4 million. So that included ARPA plus some other grants.
Yes, Jimmy, you're right, you're right. Because ARPA is only 2.7800 something. And then we have other grants, you know, such as Chesapeake Bay grant, Memorial Park grant, and also we have the basement of the police station. So that increase is coming from other grants that we have.
So the budget basically says almost about the same, but the theme was that it was ARPA and the grants. Correct, Mr. Kamali?
One more, one more clarification, Mayor, please. I just want to make sure, because we are on the record. So the number of the employees for the police department, we are only increasing one, not two. One of the employee that was in admin services, social services is moving from that department going to the police department. So we're only asking for extra police officer for FY 23.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali, for that clarification. So Jared and then Luke?
Um, I don't have any additional comments at the time.
Thank you, Jared. Luke, now it's your turn.
Thank you. For, for anyone who would like to see a copy of the budget, I believe Mr. Kamali said there's a copy online that folks can get his proposed budget. Also, you know, we met Saturday. There should be a recording of, of that meeting that we held on Saturday, where we really went through the budget line by line to identify potential reductions to tax rates to the single-family homeowners and potential additions to costs elsewhere. And so there's a lot of work left for us to do before we get a past budget. But we had a really good discussion on Saturday. And just again, want to congratulate Mr. Kamali on his first proposed budget. There were no sort of glaring errors, which, which has, that wasn't the case last year and, and a few years since I've been on Council. So I just really appreciate it, Mr. Kamali. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much. So, Mr. Kamali, thank you so much. Council, you know what this document looks like now, right? As I stated, as we changed the tax rate, all those numbers are gonna change. So, but I wanted to make sure that you guys take a look at what it looks like also for us to be able to make the changes that we need to change in this document. So that way for the next time we see this, it's gonna be more complete, okay? So I appreciate that. Can you guys let me know? Can you guys let me know if we have a member of the audience that wishes to speak? Cindy, I see you have a couple of questions. You have the floor if you want it for three minutes. Cindy Alexander?
Sure, I just, I just, a couple of questions. Currently, what is, the tax rate currently is 73 cents per hundred?
No, 70, currently 79 cents.
For fiscal year 2022?
Yes.
So you're not raising the tax rate, you're keeping it the same?
No, I've done, Luke, I'll answer. But no, Cindy, we have, Luke addressed it in his comment, but we are proposing for homes and townhomes to reduce the tax to lower than 79.
But the ordinance right now is currently at 79 cents per hundred, is that correct?
This is, I want to have a read-through, so this is not any final numbers on this document.
Okay, well, it is currently, but so we'll watch that. The other, the other question is, do you have a copy of the bud, budget ordinance calendar? And where can I find that?
So that's on our website. Right now you had Jared's office, Councilmember's office, put the link on the chat for you to be able to access this. So be under mountrainiermd.org/department/finance/budgetinfinancestatements. Or you could Google, do a search for proposed FY 23 budget.
That's beautiful. Thank you very much. That's beautiful. Thank you very much. What about, um, how many more public hearings are there available? Um, according to the budget calendar? I haven't looked at the budget calendar.
Yeah. So if you look on pages three to four of that budget, it should be, uh, it should be there. It's also in the city calendar as well.
Okay. There are more public hearings for the current budget. So this ordinance is really not.
So Cindy, um, so the hearing happened this Saturday. From now on, it's, um, open meetings to like discuss the budget. That one we had, like the hearing in the morning, and then we went line item by line item, including having the department heads uh, present any information, answer any questions. So from this point on, we're definitely gonna, based on the recommendations that we gave Saturday, we are going to be entering the process of adding the, you know, following the meetings that need to follow in order for us to discuss, uh, the changes that we propose for the budget.
Correct. Is, are there more public hearings on the budget?
On August nineteenth and April nineteenth is a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Jimmy. That's all, that's.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Can I also add one more comment to the question? I thi, I think what's sometimes confused on the, uh, when they do the, uh, tax rate and when it's the seventy-three cents you quoted, is because of the appraisals, if the, the revenue in the city was exactly the same, which would be difficult because we have to.
I, I, you know, Jimmy, I understand the cost of yield tax rate.
So that's where the seventy-three cents comes from. That's the only thing I wanted to mention.
Right. But you're increasing the tax rate to seventy-nine cents.
Thank you.
Is that correct?
It's staying the same.
No.
Guys, I, I don't know where I saw.
Put everybody on mute, please. Thank you, staff.
For heaven's sakes.
Thank you. Put everybody on mute. Uh, team, we can only answer one question at a time. If all of us are answering, I can even hear what you guys are answering. Okay? So Jimmy, the floor is yours. Go ahead and make the statement you were making.
The tax rate is seventy-nine cents for last year. The proposal here is seventy-nine cents. As Luke said, we're seriously considering reducing that, uh, rate. The seventy-three cent is the number that if, you know, the revenue in the city stayed exactly the same, the tax rate would be reduced to seventy-three cents. But there is the proposal on the, that the, is in the budget was to keep it exactly the same. And the city and the councils is, you know, seriously considering lowering that rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Luke, uh, what were you going to add?
No, just, just clarifying that the proposed budget from the city manager was just to keep the tax rate the same. It's seventy-nine cents now. It would continue to be seventy-nine cents. And then the mayor and council already stated after receiving that proposed budget that we would like to see how we can lower it. And so the goal of the mayor and council is to lower that tax rate. Um, whether it will, we'll, we'll get all the way down to the constant yield. I don't know. We have those discussions yet to be had. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And since I gave the floor to Jimmy, uh, and Luke, Jared, anything else, anything to add?
Yep, yeah, just wanted to reaffirm, um, that was, you know, the proposal brought into us um, by Mr. Kamali. And obviously he's proposed like a tax rate change. That's the council's, uh, determination. So, uh, that's, that was a reflection on Mr. Kamali's decision on that. Um, but yeah.
Cindy and others listening, as, as noted, uh, we are, uh, seriously considering, um, lowering the tax rate as stated, as stated by Jimmy, as by, um, Luke, and, um, as, as highlighted by, as well, uh, to a lower amount than it's currently. So I just, just wanted to clarify that uh, and that where we all stand. Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing to point out is like, um, Mr. Kamali gives a starting, uh, the city manager will give us a starting point, and that's why he put us a starting point. So that will, we could figure out where we're at. Um, since twenty seventeen, we've been lowering taxes. So, uh, Mr. Kamali definitely knew we're going to come, we were going to ask for a lowering of taxes. That's why he came in the day of the hearing with various proposals as well. So I don't wanted to, um, to, to make it seem as Mr. Kamali is not, um, also encouraging people to lower taxes. Okay? So we're all on the same page. Okay. Thank you so much for coming, um, for the next, uh, for the, if there's anybody else that needs to speak, please make sure you stay to your three minutes. And we might, um, we might need to, um, ask you guys to ask your questions. And we're asking also for this not to become a conversation. And if a council member says your question, please respect the, them, um, answering the question because that question is not just to answer for you as a, as a resident, but also for any resident that potentially could have the same question. So, uh, thank you, council for answering. Thank you, Cindy, for your question as well. All right. Uh, is there any other member of the public that would like to, uh, speak on this comment? Uh, like I said, nothing's been decided yet on this. It's just a run through of this document. So that way, uh, we could want it in the timeline. It's on page three to four. Um, thank you. Um, thank you, uh, Jared, uh, Councilmember Jared Stolffes for that. Okay, perfect. So council, keep reviewing it. And as we, um, proposed the different things, um, we should be able to, um, we should be able to finalize the documents once we, um, go through the diff, different meetings and get through it. Okay? All right, perfect. Okay, so new business. All right, new business, uh, ordinance oof, zero two dash twenty-two. Amending the code of ordinance of the city of Mount Rainier, chapter six, health and nuances, municipal infractions. Section six, two oh seven, open burning prohibited, unquote, to permit outdoor burning of certain combustible materials under certain conditions in chapter ten, quote, peace and order to repeal section ten dash one fifteen in its entirety. So the mayor and council will have the first reading of ordinance number two dash twenty-two. Jared, I'm going to see the floor to you because this is your ordinance. Go ahead.
Yep. Can you, uh, bring it up on the screen for me? I will go there. Okay. Um, so just a reminder, folks, this is, uh, amendment to the city code. Uh, what this basically does is brings our, um, policy on, um, I, I've described it colloquially as a recreational fire pits in line with the counties, um, both as a way to, um, lighten things on our code, uh, code department to enable them to uh, focus on, um, health and safety issues with fires and also to, um, especially with potentially another variant of COVID coming around, find, uh, provide a way for folks safe, to safely gather outside, uh, particularly in the colder months. So, um, this is again, uh, we've, I've gone, I've, we've discussed this multiple times, so I won't go too in depth because we've discussed in previous work sessions. But I will begin reading. Um, this is amending the code of, oh, can I? Sorry. Amendment the code of ordinance of the city of Mount Rainier, chapter six, health and nu- nuisances, municipal infractions. Section six, one oh seven, open burning prohibited to permit the outdoor burning of certain combustible materials under certain conditions and chapter ten, peace and order to repeal section ten, one fifteen in its entirety. Whereas pursuant to section five dash two oh two of the local government, government article, the annotated code of Maryland, the council of the city of Mount Rainier, Maryland City Council has the authority to pass such ordinances as deemed necessary to assure the good government and the municipality, protect and preserve the municipalities' rights, property and privileges, preserve peace and good orders, cure persons and property from danger and destruction, and protect the health, comfort and convenience of the residents and municipality. Whereas pursuant to the foregoing authority, the city council has adopted chapter six, health and nuisances, municipal infractions, and chapter ten, uh, peace and order of the city code. And whereas it has come to the attention of the city council that both chapter six and chapter ten have provisions relating to the outdoor burning of combustible materials that appear to overlap in subject matter. Whereas it has come to the further attention of city council, the city code fails to permit residents to engage in certain outdoor burning activities, including the use of outdoor fire pits, chimeneas and similar devices to the same extent permitted by Prince George's County. Whereas the mayor and council desire to combine all the code provisions related to the outdoor burning of the combustible materials in an own section and to permit the outdoor burning of certain materials, including the use of fire pits, chimeneas and certain devices to the extent, same extent that Prince George's County permits them in order to avoid confusion and for the general enjoyment of city residents. Section one. Now therefore be it ordained further and enacted by the council city of Mount Rainier, Maryland, that chapter six, health and nuisances, municipal infractions, section six dash one oh seven, open burning prohibited shall be and hereby amended to read as the following. Section six dash one oh seven, open burning prohibited. A, except as permitted in uh, sub-sections B and C of this section, it will be unlawful for a per, or a firm to set on fire, caused to be burned at the limits of city of Mount Rainier. Any garbage, film, rubber, paper products, trash or leaves or other substances except within stove or furnaces located in buildings within incinerators approved by farm marshal and building inspector in compliance with the air pollution regulations in effect. The city of Mount Rainier, um, may upon application form provided by the city grant a permit to burn appropriate material in and on public property. It permits so specify the nature of the permitted activity, the place in which the activity may take place, and the date or time during which the activity may be permitted. C, burning materials and private properties permitted only as follows. One, open burning means a fire where materials burn on the ground or an open receptacle without a chimney or stack, including campfires. Open burning shall be subject to the following conditions. Open fire shall be attended at all times by a person eighteen years of age or older who's in direct view of the fire. The fire shall be attended until completely extinguished. B, garbage, dead animals, animal waste, tire, plastic rubber and other materials that create dense smoke or emissions injurious or noxious to people or property shall not be burnt. C, it shall be unlawful for any person to kindle any open fire except cooking fires or recreational fires without first notifying public safety communications such burning where the burning continues for more than one day. Public safety communication shall be notified prior to eight AM each day of burning. D, cooking fire shall only burn only the following fuels, clean firewood, dried firewood, charcoal fuel determined to be safe and appropriate by the fire chief or fire chief's designated. E, the fire chief or authorized representative may prohibit open burning at any time. It is determined the kindling of an open fire creates a fire hazard. F, except for those fires used for cooking food or on a property occupied in a single-family dwelling, open fire shall be less than thirty feet from any building or structure. A clear space for igniting one material is not less than ten feet in diameter shall be maintained around the fire. The burning of materials of any kind, uh, within thirty feet of any public road, streets, highways, alleys, sidewalks, public rightways shall be prohibited at all times. H, where open burning is being conducted under a permit, terms of permit issued by the Prince George's County Health Department, the permitee shall be personally responsible for the fire at all times. The permit shall be in the possession of the person supervising the burning at all times. I, no person shall kindle fire upon land or another without permission of the owner thereof or the owner's agent. J, recreational fires shall be no larger than three feet in diameter. K, a weight extinguisher fire shall be available at all burn sites. L, recreational fires shall be used to dispose of leaves, branches, brushers or vegetation. Only dry natural wood may be burned in a recreational fire. L two, uh, recreational fires are prohibited during drought conditions of winds greater than twelve miles an hour or during an air pollution event. An air pollution event is where the air quality has been designated a code red or code orange. Three, uh, fires and salamanders, other similar devices fired in propane or number two, fuel oil, construction sites are permitted. For, um, for fires or fixed or portable outdoor fireplaces, chimeneas and other similar devices are permitted. Such fuel, fire shall be only fueled by seasoned dry firewood must be used in accordance with the manufacturer's guidelines and are subject to the following conditions. A, fire shall be attended at all times by a person eighteen years or older who's in direct view of the fire. The fire shall be attended until it's completely extinguished. Fire extinguisher or hose must be available during the use of these devices described in the section C four. B, a fire shall be at least thirty feet from any structure. Fires are not permitted on any balcony or deck. C, the fire chief or the fire chief's designated may prohibit such fires at any time the fire chief or his designated determines their use creates a fire hazard. D, fires and these devices described in subsection C four are prohibited within thirty feet of any public road, streets, highways, alleys, sidewalks and rightways. E, no person shall use these devices um, described in the subsection C four upon the land of another without permission of the owner thereof or the owner's agent. Uh, who, five, smoke emissions from any allowed fire must not consistently exceed twenty percent opacity. Opacity is determined by the fire chief or the fire chief's designated. Fire left or visible smoke conveyed across all property lines are prohibited. No fire shall be left to smolder. All fires shall be fully extinguished with zero smoke emissions. Smoke from fuel cooked fires is permitted by state or local law is exempt from the subsection C five. Six, fixed portable fireplaces and pit pits filled by gas propane are permitted, single-family dwellings or townhouses when used in accordance with the manufacturer's guidelines. The devices described in the subsection C six are subject to the following conditions. A, the device shall be attended at all times by a person eighteen years or older who's in direct view of the device. A fire extinguisher or hose shall be available during the use of devices described in subsection C six. B, a device described in the subsection C six used on a deck shall be at least ten feet from single-family dwellings or townhouses. The combustion area should not be in direct contact with the combustible decking. C, the fire chief or the fire chief's designated prohibit the use of such devices described in subsection C six at any time the fire chief or fire chief's designated determines that this use creates a fire hazard. D, use of these devices described in subsection C six are prohibited or on or within thirty feet of any public road, streets, highways, alleys, sidewalks or public rightway. E, no person shall use these devices upon the property of another without permission of the owners or thereof or owner's agents. Section two. Be it further enacted, um, that the, the, the council of the city of Mount Rainier, that chapter ten, peace and order shall be hereby and is amended, uh, amended to repeal section ten fifteen, open burning prohibited in its entirety, um, and to reserve section ten dash one fifteen for future purposes. Section three, this ordinance is adopted by the council city of Mount Rainier this day of, sorry, this should read, um, this should read April, not February, um, April twenty, twenty twenty-two and shall take effect on, um, uh, the day of April twenty twenty-two, provided that a fair summary has been ready at the meeting, which should introduce that the meeting has been acted on, and a copy shall be posted at city hall immediately and after introduction till is acted on and upon for two weeks after it becomes effective. That a fair summary is published at least once in a newspaper, having general circulation in the city, inclusive of the city's newsletter and otherwise delivered to every city household.
Thank you, Jared. That was a complete read through.
Yeah. And, and the reason, folks, this is so long is what we did incorporated the, uh, the city's, um, what the city did was basically incorporate the county's guidance, uh, instead of incorporating my reference, we incorporated the text in full. So if the county at some point changes their guidance, we're able to, um, we are able to, uh, adopt, um, and make a decision on whether we want to automatically, uh, include those changes.
Thank you, Jared. I mean, it's like, can you put it all the way to the top, please? And, uh, having heard, um, complete read through of the all the way to the top, thank you, of ordinance, uh, two dash twenty twenty-two, um, council, I'm opening the floor to you. Um, any, uh, comments, feedback? I'm going to start with, um, Luke, followed by Jimmy.
Good job, Jared. Way to write your first ordinance. Uh, big moment. Way to go. Um, thanks for doing this. Um, you're going to make my, my fire pit in my backyard legal now, finally. Thank you. No, but in all seriousness, I know this is nice for folks because they, you know, they don't have to worry about something. And a lot of us have been having fires in our backyards since the pandemic began. So just appreciate it. Thank you.
Fires of fire pits, Luke. There's a difference. Okay. Uh, Jimmy, the floor is yours.
I just second, uh, what Luke said. Good work, Jared. It's always good when we can, uh, deal with an issue, uh, actually be able to resolve it through a revised ordinance. I'm getting some background noise, by the way. So, but anyway. Uh, thank, good work, Jared.
All right. Thank, thank you, guys. Uh, so for me, yeah. Thank you for the great work, um, that you put together. Um, I know it was a lot, a lot to make sure you, uh, marry both, um, what we were, where we're supposed to be doing at the same time with what the county and what it looks like. So you know what? I just realized we have, uh, our director of code, um, enforcement on the line. So Jared, thank you so much for a read through, for the work on this. This is our first reading, uh, with the caveat that we need to change the day at the end. Um, if that could be taken care of, um, this should go on to second reading. Um, Alma, um, do you have anything to add to this?
Um, good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager and Residents. Um, I do not have anything to add. I just want to thank, um, also Councilmember Stoltz Fitz for his hard work in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. All right, perfect. So now we're going to be opening up to the audience, uh, turkey members, please, uh, make sure you have three minutes to have a comment, but please make sure, uh, once your comment is done, the, the council members uh, will be able, or myself will be able to, um, will try to answer your question, but please make sure not to talk in top of the council members during their answering the questions. Once, uh, your mic is done, your mic is done and let them answer, please, because if not, it's going to get very crazy very quickly. Uh, because we cannot understand three people talking at the same time. Especially two. All right, um, opening the floor, um, Jared, can you let me know if there's any, uh, questions or feedback from Facebook? let me know if there's any questions or feedback from Facebook?
No comments on Facebook.
Thank you so much. Anybody in the chat, please type your name, last name, address, if you have anything to add to this. Seeing that there is none, this is an official first reading of ordinance two dash 2022. For the second reading, Jared, you might, you could read the highlights. And if there's any change to address, please let us know. But I think that right now, I think we're all in agreement that the only thing that has to change is the day at the end, correct, Jared?
Yes.
Right. Perfect. Thank you, everyone. And congratulations, Jared. You're like one step away from having your first ordinance approved. You could frame it up.
Thanks. No, I'm just, I'm glad we can, you know, we can focus our codes, you know, give our code the opportunity to focus on health and safety and real public nuisances. I mean, I know there have been some significant, and not put them in the place of, you know, basically having to chase after homeowners for something that is permitted everywhere else in the county, but by kind of virtue of a dated, dated code that wasn't updated, hadn't been updated, wasn't here. So I hope we don't, I really, really hope we don't end up with like a, I guess at this point, we're at like a fifth or sixth wave of pandemic. But, you know, we're in a place again where we have to congregate outdoors. You know, I'd like to be able to help facilitate a safer way for folks to do that, not, not place them at odds with the city code. So thanks again, folks, and I appreciate your patience on this as I kind of navigated this process for the first time.
Thank you. And thank you, Alma, as well for your support and work on this, Mr. Kamali, as well. Thank you both. So Jared, one more step for it to become, for people to have legal fire, fire pits in the city. I definitely echo your sentiment. I think definitely it is needed, and that would give some guidance to what it looks like, because, you know, I was told early on, right, if a law is in the books, whether you started yesterday in council or 300 years from now, you are hired those rules, and if they need to be changed, you change them or add or create new rules. So I think this is a perfect example on how it was an outdated rule, and you're bringing it to, to where it needs to be. So I thank you for that. Okay. All right. So moving on to item number 12. Ordinance number three dash 2022, amending Chapter Two of the Assessment and Taxation and Fees of the Mount Rainier Code to Ground a Property Tax Credit for Certain Senior Citizens and Retired Veterans. The mayor and council will have the first reading of ordinance all three, 2022. And just as a feedback, we had, we actually had like one of our first readings last year on this subject, and that's the reason why it's under all, all information, right? So it's been some work coming through. Thank you, Jimmy, for bringing it up again. And last time, we were in agreement somehow, some way between all the changes from council, from one council to the other. We needed to make final adjustments to this document, but it's ready. Jimmy, the floor is yours.
Mayor, if it's all right, I'll read it and I'll make some comments.
Go ahead.
Amending Chapter Two, Assessment and Taxation and Fees of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Mount Rainier, Rainier to amend Section Two dash 109, Property Tax Credit for Certain Individuals Age 65 or Older and Veterans, to expand the eligibility of homeowners in the city to claim the tax credit provided they are under. Whereas pursuant to Code 5 dash 202 of the Local Government Article, the Annuated Code of Maryland, the Council of the City of Mount Rainier, the City Council has the authority to pass such ordinance as it deems necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, protect and preserve the municipality's rights, property, and privileges, preserve peace and good order, secure persons and property from danger and destruction, and protect the health, comfort, and communities of the residents of the municipality. And whereas pursuant to Code 6 dash 203 of the Tax Property Article, the Annuated Code of Maryland, the City Council has a specific authority, I think should be to impose a property tax on those classes of property that selects to be subject to municipal corporation property tax. And whereas pursuant to various provisions of the Tax Property Article of the Annuated Code of Maryland, the City Council has the authority to provide for property tax credits for certain categories of property. And the City Council has done so by adoption of certain provisions of Chapter Two, Assessment and Taxation and Fees of the City Code. Whereas pursuant to Code 9 dash 258 of the Taxi Property Act, Tax Property Article, the Annuated Code of Maryland, the City Council has the specific authority, it should be to grant a real property tax with inspected dwellings owned by certain elderly persons and veterans. And whereas pursuant to the foregoing authority, the city has adopted dash two dash 109 of the City Code, Property Tax Credit for Certain Individuals Age 65 or Older and Veterans, implementing the tax credit authorized by Tax Property Article 9 dash 258, and providing eligibility, eligibility criterias for homeowners claiming a tax credit there on the end. Okay, here we go. Whereas, as the mayor and city council desire to expand the eligibility of C. homeowners to claim the tax credit provided under two dash 109 and Section One, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the Council of the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland, that's Chapter Two, Assessment and Taxation and Fees, two dash 109, Property Tax Credit for Certain Individuals Age 65 or Older and Veterans shall be, and hereby amended to read as follow. Section two dash 109, Property Tax Credit for Certain Individuals Age 65 or Older and Veterans. A. Definition in the section that follows in terms of the meanings indicated. One. Armed Forces of the United States means the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Space Force, and Coast Guard. Two. Dwelling has a meaning set forth in Section nine dash 105 of the Tax Property Article of the Maryland Code. B. Credit established in accordance with Section nine dash 258 of the Tax Property Article of the Maryland Code, the owner of a dwelling may receive a property tax credit against the city property tax imposed on the dwelling of an eligible individual. C. Eligibility. An individual is eligible to receive a property tax credit if, one, the individual is at least 65 years, and A. Has lived in the same dwelling for at least the preceding 30 years, which is a change from 40 years. B. Is at least 65 years old and is a retired member of the Armed Forces of the United States. And two, the dwelling for which a city property tax credit sought is the principal residence of the eligible individual, and has a maximum assessed value of $700,000. It's increased to $500,000. The ordinance adopted by the Council of the City of Mount Rainier this day of blank and shall take effect on blank, provided that a fair summary has been read at the meeting at which it is introduced, at the meeting at which it has been acted upon, and a copy shall be posted at City Hall immediately after introduction until it is acted upon, and for at least two weeks after it becomes effective, that a fair summary is published at least once in a newspaper, having general circulation in the city, inclusive of the city's newest newsletter, mail, or otherwise delivered to every city household. That it. No more?
Thank you so much. Can you go to the last page, Melissa? Keep going, keep going, keep going.
Page three.
Yeah.
That's just signing. Okay.
That's signing. Can you go down a little? Page two, page two, Melissa. There you go. So just to give a general summary, the things that are being, move it up, Melissa, or move it down, whichever it is, so she could show me the stuff. To give it a general summary for what just was read, the things that are being changed as pre, the current law states that is supposed to be living the same dwelling for at least 40 years, that's being changed to 30 years. The dwelling in which the city property tax credit is sought to the, is the principal resident of eligible individual is going to be changed, maximum assessed value of currently is $500,000, and it will be changed to $700,000. Those are your, and Space Force was added. Those are the three changes, correct, Jimmy?
Two changes. Yes, correct. Let me know what I can say, make a comment.
So Space Force from 30 to 40, and for 500 to 700 assessed value for the residents. Okay, perfect. So you guys heard a clear run through of the whole entire document. I listed the summary of the things that will be changed in this ordinance that once is passed. And now I'm gonna open the floor up. Jimmy, do you want me to leave you at the end? Do you want to start?
I like it. I like to just kind of do it, and then people may not have to summarize. Just in general, we know that tax rates are high in our city, and we've always had a policy from when I was in council, ongoing to try and, you know, help the people who are hurting the most, you know, able to pay those taxes. And we do a piggybacked tax credit for what's called the homeowner's tax credit for people who make, I think, under $60,000. And the state has one, and we additionally do that, and we give people checks on that. About five years ago, the state did a new bill that authorized cities to actually give a tax break to people who either lived in a house for over 40, 30, 40, no, any time, a limit 40 or 30 years, and also the veterans. There were two problems with this, with the way the ordinance read. Once Cindy asked a question, if somebody's house was assessed at over $500,000, they would not be getting this tax credit at all. A lot of people have bought these houses at $200,000, and to no fault of their own, the appraisals are now $500,000. So somebody who may have lived in a house for 40 years, who bought their house for $100,000, assessed value is now over $500,000, they wouldn't be getting the credit. So this is people, this doesn't affect people now buying the houses, but the way the ordinance read, if your house, and we, I, we calculated, there were six or seven houses of people who've lived here for 30 to 40 years, whose assessments were actually at $500,000, they would have been completely ineligible for this tax credit. So we had to raise the assessed level for that, so they'd be eligible for it. This, they didn't buy it at that month. They bought it at $100, $200,000, or, you know, at least that time, 40 years ago, even less. The second thing is, and this is something the council was going to do a year ago, was to actually go from 40 years to 30 years. This is a big thing in that it affects about 100 people who've lived here a long time, and we'll give them a tax credit of about $400, $500 if they apply for it. So it's, again, I think the, the desire of the council is to kind of, we know appraisals have been going up, we know tax has been going up, and the people who have lived here for a long time are getting hurt by that. And so we're trying to address this by giving a tax credit to people who've lived there a long time, and may, you know, may have bought the house less, but now the appraisal is going so high that their tax rates are going high also. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jimmy. I'm gonna go to Jared, followed by Luke.
Yep. No, I just, thank Jimmy for, for your work on this. I, you know, this, this, the city was for a long time a sort of a really affordable pocket in the region. It still is a relatively affordable pocket in the region. I think we all, we all know that, you know, the gentrification sort of wave has basically come directly east through DC and is, you know, now, now increasing, you know, home values and assessments and everything else in, in Mount Rainier, and more broadly, starting to parts of Prince George's County. So, you know, I think, especially for folks that are, you know, that are under a, you know, a particular burden, they're on fixed income elderly, they've been here a long time. This is really important for kind of helping maintain the affordability of our town, especially for folks that are, you know, unable to kind of, we're gonna have greater challenges meeting some of the, some of the impacts caused by the, the rise in home values. So, you know, this is, this is really important, especially to maintain, you know, some of the history and some of the, and continued input and participation by a lot of longtime residents in this community. So thank you, Jimmy, again, for putting this together and for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Jared. Luke?
Yeah, appreciate you, Jimmy, for putting this together. This is a big issue that we've all had to deal with. And we've tried to reduce taxes, and we've tried to change this figure in the past, and we're changing it again now. So just appreciate you, Jimmy, bringing this up again. Now for us to keep hitting, hitting down that door and doing what we can to give people tax credits. Just to let members of the public know, this is sort of one of the tools we have at our disposal. One is obviously lowering the tax rate, which we've tried to do every year for the last few years. Another one is trying to expand certain tax credits. The city doesn't have an unlimited set of tools at its disposal. The state sort of sets for us what kind of tax credits we're allowed to do as an entity. And so we try to use those to the best of our ability. But, you know, we also try to get creative at times. So this is one of those tools, and we're looking to use it right now. So appreciate you, Jimmy, for getting this bill here. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Thank you, Jimmy, for making sure we followed through with this. I know definitely more homes are gonna be benefit. You mentioned 100. I think that the original thought last year was definitely making sure it tied it up to like the mortgage, right? 30 years is usually like the, the standard mortgage, right? So we found a reason to make sure it was to 40. Also making sure, thank you for making sure, like, you know, the assessed value was addressed to move that up a bit, because the reality of it is like the homes in Mount Rainier, even a beat-down, like, great-to-destroy home is looking closer to $400,000 instead of $100,000 or even less, that quite a few of our family members purchased their home under $300,000, right? Or closer to that. And now our homes are valued so high, so this will allow for people to be able to, to get this tax credit, get the extra help, you know, get the benefits of lowering taxes on one end. If they're low income, the other home credit, right? Between home credit, homestead, and the veteran, and the veteran slash senior tax, it will allow for them to be able to get various help in order to reduce how much money they need to pay them, either, in this case, would be the city, and in other cases, like, you know, the county and the city. So there's been a lot of, a lot of effort and work, and we need to make sure it gets to the second reading. Mr. Kamali, can you please start looking with your team, the cause for us to put it in, I'm assuming that Gasset, right? Because part of the ordinance, even Jared's ordinance, right, is, is requesting for us to put him in, in a published circulation beyond the messenger. Okay? So if your team could look into that, so that way, for the second reading, reading, we have everything ready to go, so that way it goes off the next day, the next day, so they could get to print, so we could mobilize this as fast as we can to make sure it could become, it could be acted as slump. This is definitely one of the ones that both of them, right, that benefit our community. So if you guys could take care of that, and the work session, you guys could add for an, an update, but that we could, we could work on it, okay? So it's supposed to be in the messenger, and I'm assuming that Gasset, I believe that's the one that we've been using also for the elections. And I will tell you this, the various mayors have, have discussed, you know, with, with the county and also state that if that, if that is specifically portion, when it comes to being in a, in a newspaper circulation in the city, because there's so many little circulation newspapers in the city, if that could be amended to something else, because it definitely makes it very hard, very hard, very expensive, right, to, to put it in, in arc in a newspaper, especially like, you know, some of the cities have discussed that there's no circulation in smaller newspapers, and trying to put something like this, let's say, in the Washington Post, or any bigger news, newspaper, is definitely a drain for them. So until that changes, we need to make sure we abide by our ordinance rules. So if you guys could provide that information, so we could put and talk to, talk to legal to figure out what exactly of all this needs to be placed there, because these documents are, are big, whether it's like the name of the ordinance, plus the various three or four items that we're changing, that'll be, that'll be something, you know, you and legal could work with. So, Mr. Kamali, thank you for that. Jimmy, thank you as well.
One additional, just quick comment, just as the, I just want everybody to know that the deadline is April 1st, so this would be for effective next year.
April 1st, each year. April 1st each year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you Jimmy. So we'll, we'll get, we'll get it through, we'll go through the publication, everything else we need to get on it. But at least there's some, some help coming, you know? All right, thank you for that. All right, is there, I see Shivali, go ahead, the mic is your three minutes.
Hi, thank you. So this, I'm, this is one of the laws that I'm very proud of for the city to have that, you know, that city values aging in place. And it's great that it's getting reviewed every few years. I have two questions. One is, I see that the cap has been raised from 500 to 700. I'm wondering, is there a reason that we need a cap at all? Because, why not remove the cap? This cap of 700 is going to become obsolete in another three years or, or more or sooner? And, you know, is there some like legal requirement, we need a cap? If not, I would recommend just getting rid of the cap, the housing assessment cap altogether. I mean, unless there's some specific reason that we have to state a number of any kind. And if that's the case, then why not make it higher so that this law doesn't become obsolete in like another three years? My second question is, do we know in present day numbers, how many people in the city avail themselves of the, of the current, of the current ordinance? When, when I was on council with Brian Nedler, we made a change to this, to this part of the code and we'd ask the finance director to just calculate, you know, what was the, how many people had used it? How many people, if, if this change were made, roughly how much of a difference it would make? These are all numbers that are readily available. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to have this change. I think moving it from, you know, for the 40 years to the 30 years is appropriate. But it also makes sense to understand what the impact on the, the budget will be next year. In terms of how many people are availing themselves of it, how many more people is this putting into the pool? And then of course, the last thing is, what, once, you know, once you guys are finished making the changes, how will you guys get the word out so that people know that there's been a, A, been a change in the law? And B, for people who never knew in the first place, they find out as well. So in, in summary, why cap it at 700,000? Why not get rid of it? And then do we know what kind of an impact it's having on the, this will have on the budget? And how many people are availing themselves of it? And communications about it afterwards, so people know.
So I will have Jimmy answer some of them, but I'll take a list for information. That's what we're discussing right now. It has to go on circulation so that Gasset and then the, obviously all for social media and newsletter. And in the last meeting where Jimmy introduced it, he definitely like discussed how many homes would be benefited by this. So he has roughly a number on it as well. He could answer that one. Regarding the cap, I think because we have to put a number to help alleviate the situation when it comes to our budget. I think that's the reason why the cap was important, because you're giving money back to the community. And if you, and that way we could at least assess for how much of the money we have to put on the budget to account for everybody that is available for this. So Jimmy, this was, Jimmy, go ahead, yours?
Yeah, just the cap was somewhat of a compromise to get a consensus on the thing. We can always look later, I think a $700,000 cap should be good for a couple of years. None of the people, I, I looked over the assessments of people who might be eligible. And the top one was about 520, but there were people, honestly, who have lived here for 40 years, who had an assessment of 520. One person who would have been ineligible, so we had to raise the cap. The second thing is, my estimates were there were about 50 people and it'd be going down a little because people leave. Were eligible for, who've been here for over 40 years and about another 80 over 30 years. But the reality is, and we'll have to do a better job, is only, from Mr. Kamali told me, only like six to eight people actually applied for that, so we'll have to do a better job. And we estimated that given the amount, because this, you have to take away the homestead tax credit, that it will probably cost 50, maybe if people use it well, $50,000, which what we had talked about to put in the budget for next year for, for, for funding. If a higher number of people use it, this year only, you know, the number was probably like $5,000, but that's because people unfortunately do not know about it. Oh, that answers your question, Shivali.
And Jimmy, I'm thinking that since we more or less know the addresses, right? The people that will qualify, we could always send them a letter to let them know that they qualify for this. And so that way they're fully aware. I mean, the list is not so big that that could not be managed. So that could be part of our information to send and say, hey, the, the council has changed this rule, which means now that you qualified, right? Please submit your, your application for next year, once we clear, obviously the second reading and everything else that we need to do for sending them information out. So that should cover most of them. So I think that in a few years it could be reviewed, but that will at least we put X amount of money on it and, and figure out what it looks like. And thank you Jimmy for also doing the research. I know we had a lot of questions. I believe it's like two or three, not, I mean, the first time you brought up, the second time as well. And you were able to provide like a, a document and showing us more or less why is it that we needed to move that up on the list, okay? All right. Then you see, anybody else, any comments, Facebook or Zoom? If you have any comment, please put your name on the chat and we'll, and I'll call upon you. And street and block and number. No comments from Facebook, thank you Jared. Okay, so that was a fair first reading or ordinance all three dash 2022. It will be added to our May legislative agenda for a vote. Council, if you have anything minor to add, you know, talk to Jimmy and then we'll, we'll fix whatever it is. But at this point, it's, it's geared for the second, second reading. Okay, all right, thank you guys. Okay, so item number 13, vote on approval minutes. The Maryland Council vote on approving the minutes for February 15, 2022 work session, March 1st, 2022 legislation meeting. So council, I'm opening the floor to you guys. Luke, Jimmy, Jared, go ahead.
I had motion that we approve the minutes for February 15, 2022 and March 1st, 2022. Pending any amendments being provided to the city clerk this Friday at close of business.
Second motion.
It's improperly moved and second, any discussion? If you guys shake your head, I'm fine with that as well. All right, hearing that there's no discussion, is there any objections? Abstentions? Hearing that there is none. The minutes for February 15 and March 01, 2022 have been officially approved. So Melissa, they're approved. If you mind, if you see anything that you need to change, send it to everybody else. But this minutes were presented in the last two, three weeks ago, okay? All right, you guys see the upcoming events on our agenda, thus far the message, we want to make sure we start sending out, so that way people are aware. If you need more information about the egg hunt, the virtual meet and greet for the Candace, a special election, Mount Rainier Day, Combi Yard, Juneteenth, a flag raising ceremony, a pride parade. You could find all that information at mountrainiermd.org or through all of our social media handles. And that mean all of them, okay? All right, can I entertain a motion for a German?
Salute. Second.
And it's happened, okay. Apparently this is moved and second by everybody. Any objections? Abstentions, hearing none. This meeting is coming to an end at 8:56 PM. Thank you staff for your great work in carrying us through between meetings and on the meeting. And thank you council members as well, okay? Take care.
Bye bye. Thank you, everybody.
Bye, thank you everyone.